Okay, when we return to the meeting's order. We just finished a closed session meeting. And during that closed session meeting, we had two items. For the first item, no action was taken. Instructions were given to the real property negotiator. And the second action, we are going to be working through a process to put on the market a piece of property known as Hobo's Camp, right? And anyway, it's down Benner Freddy's. It's a piece of property that has a lot of right weights issues, but we're exploring the idea that there might be somebody out there that can find a use for it. That's all we have, and so let's have the flags as well.
Our pleasure to be here is to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, in the business of whatever we need.
Okay, do I have to look for approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motions approve the agenda. The February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
And a second? Okay, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, I have a modification.
I have a modification too.
Okay. I'm not mayor, correct?
That's what I thought too. It was a minor little thing, but I was reading through it and I couldn't figure out which minute I was reading.
I won't mention any names.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, after that, we have presentations. We're going to start off with the presentation of Barbara Cross, an award. Before I stand up and I'll stand up and hand this to you and give you the presentation, I just want to go over it. Barbara has been an integral part of our community for many years, moving here from Redding. She came from the world of dog and pet grooming and then became one of the driving forces in the city of Dunsmere. I know her passion throughout that has been for the historic district. She's worked tirelessly to keep that as positive and beautiful as it can be. And she's also stepped through the planning commission and shared it during a time when there were a lot of issues and a lot of contentious items. So I think the city owes Barbara a debt of gratitude, and I'd like to personally thank her for being part of the team that helps make this city work.
Thank you.
Bruce, 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 Bruce. Oh, there is a bit of, sorry, I missed that mark here.
It's a key change with the key to the city.
Thank you, City Council, for this honor. This will look nice in my office, I'll bring it, hang it on the wall. I joined the, I joined the planning commission after I had lived here for thirty-two years because I felt that the work of it was important, and especially the work connected with the historic district. I do agree with Ron McCloud, who served when there was a separate body that took care of the historic district. There were five commissioners on the historic district commission, and that's all they did. And I do believe that that is something the council should consider going back to because it's a big topic. And usually in the planning commission meetings, it does not get the time or attention that the historic district deserves. It's the heart of our community. We have many major businesses there. Reasons why people come to visit Dunsmere are pretty much in the historic district, along with the outdoors, of course, which we could hardly improve on. But we can improve on the historic district, and it's old by definition. And it's always in need of some sprucing up, fixing, repairing, code enforcement. I would like to urge all the citizens and the council to look at it with fresh eyes once in a while and say, gee, that doesn't look too good, or that looks like it needs fixing, or look at it with the eyes of a tourist, you know, and would it, is there a way we can make it more appealing? Is there a way we can enhance the historic part of it? And I believe there are those ways, and it's time for me to move on and other people to step up, but just, I just want to emphasize that is the core of our town, that's the heartbeat of our town. And so if, if you have time, and I hope you make time, to consider re-establishing the Historic Diddy District Committee as a separate entity from the planning commission. I believe it would get more of the attention and work that it needs to be the jewel that it should be and is in our hearts, but isn't always visually what we would like it to be. So, thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Barbara, I would say also that we'll have that item in our agenda tonight, and I hope that you can stick around and provide some of the wisdom that we've, I know Mark's been checking with other people, but certainly would like to have your input on that discussion when we come up to it. Thank you. Next, we'll have the annual sheriff's report by Sheriff John Hulby himself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished council members and members of city staff, and the great citizens of Dunsmere. Thank you for indulgence, and I also want to recognize Captain Carl Houtman, who is our charge of field operations. He's now the second in charge in the sheriff's office, and he wanted to be here because we all want to be here, not only to give you a report, but also to thank you and the citizens of Dunsmere for being such outstanding partners in this public safety realm. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize our police chief, Lou Barrow, whose Sergeant Barrow has done an excellent job in, you know, presiding over Dunsmere. And, you know, he's, he's done a lot, and we appreciate his efforts, and he actually prepared much of what I'm going to tell you today. So, and he collaborates with us a lot, and we appreciate his efforts and the whole management team and the outstanding cooperation we get from the city of Dunsmere, who are just great to work with. So, I'm going to give you a few highlights and some of the statistical data to give you an idea of what the trends are in Dunsmere. I can tell you, you know, countywide, generally speaking, you know, property crimes are up, violent crimes generally are up. We thought we were going to escape the year without a homicide, but we found it Monday. The good news is, we're not sure if that was a murder or not, the individual, it may be, it may be a self-defense situation. The good news is that our, we have a great major crime unit, and they conducted a follow-up investigation, and it sounds like he was seventy-six, and it sounds like his son was kind of abusing him over time emotionally and physically. And there may have been some legitimate self-defense issues, and we try to determine the truth of the matter. But notwithstanding that incident, we had four homicides in the county last year. Our jail's always full, we have nothing but felons in the jail, but we have a great board of supervisors, including your representative, Eddie Allen Sweller, they've all been extremely supportive of us, they're doing a great job, and we have a great city or county administrator, and we love working with them, we really appreciate it. But anyway, this was a busy year, last year was a busy year. We have had an increase in the volume of calls, for example. Last year, we went from seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine calls for service to, in 2016, to two thousand ninety-one, last year. Four hundred and thirty-five of these calls initiated a criminal investigation resulting in sixteen felony arrests and fifty-two misdemeanor arrests. During the third quarter of last year alone, from October first, or December thirty-first, we handled four hundred and thirty-six calls for service. Sixty-three were security checks, twenty-four school checks, twenty-eight patrol checks, twenty-four, excuse me, twenty welfare checks, and many other services to the community. Last year, we issued eighty-nine traffic citations, some issuing citations for, sometimes we issue citations for arrest warrants instead of booking people because that way, you know, we keep our deputy in town, so he doesn't, he or she doesn't have to travel up to Way Rica. So, but most of those are traffic, but eighty-nine citations. And also, we enforce illegal parking in the Shasta Retreat area and other problem parking areas for, you know, we emphasize speeding downtown near the schools where people walk and kids play, and we had a lot of issues with driving without a license, driving on suspended licenses, sometimes people don't have any insurance. So, I think our deputies are trying to focus their attention on, you know, a wide variety of public safety related issues, criminal and traffic. Deputies drove fourteen thousand five hundred miles patrolling your neighborhoods, responding to calls for service, and conducting follow-up investigations, and sometimes we had to transport prisoners and evidence. And it was kind of an active, involved, and dedicated law enforcement presence to reduce crime and, and not only responding to crime, but also deterring crime that occurs. And we like reassuring citizens and visitors and reinforcing that healthy and mutually beneficial, you know, relationship we have with the city. We want to, we want to convey that this is a pretty safe city, and this is a great place to live and a great place to visit. Good fishing too, I'll get to that in a minute. Anyway, deputies worked about six thousand hours performing duties, but again, have a direct and positive impact on the citizens of the city and visitors. We have a direct impact on the quality of life. Our main emphasis is supporting local businesses and assisting citizens and visitors with solving criminal as well as civil related issues that occur from time to time. And some of, just, and I'm going to mention just some of the major cases, just so you have a flavor for some of the more serious offenses that occur. Deputies responded to a domestic violence investigation in which a friend became worried about the victim's safety when she saw snapshot photos of her, and she appeared to be trying to cover up injuries. We responded, and during the course of the investigation, we learned that the suspect was jealous and convinced of the victim's unfaithfulness. In retribution, he physically and mentally abused the victim and further humiliated her by live streaming video of her as he placed her in degrading positions and made her do unsavory things while beating her in the presence of a child. So the suspect was arrested and was found guilty of spousal rape, corporal injury, assault with a deadly weapon, criminal threats, and cruelty to a child. So, you know, sometimes our deputies, we have a very tenured staff for the most part, sometimes, you know, a routine call is not really routine, and you end up identifying some unsavory or gruesome crimes being committed, you know, in our community. So, another, another call, deputies responding to a residence as a follow-up to information that a fugitive was last seen at that residence, because sometimes people traverse the city and they're wanted for various crimes, despite evidence that the person of interest was somewhere inside the house. The homeowner, believe it or not, lied and attempted to hide the fugitive. Deputies surrounded the house, contacted detectives to obtain a search warrant, because we want to observe the constitutional rights of our citizens and not just barge into a house unless there are exigent circumstances. When deputies searched the house, they found the fugitive hiding in the attic under piles of wrought insulation, he was a little itchy. But anyway, charges were filed against the tenant and the fugitive for search and rescue. Another incident, deputies are currently working a series of significant embezzlement cases with approximately fourteen victims identified so far, with losses ranging from one to twenty-plus thousand dollars. Cases of this nature are complex and involve a significant amount of research. We have to review large amounts of financial data, and we have to work closely with numerous victims, and the suspect has been identified and charges are pending. Recently, deputies initiated a traffic stop for a driver who was known to have a suspended driver's license. Drugs were found on the person during the arrest, additional drugs and firearms were found on the passenger and in the vehicle during a subsequent search of the vehicle, and this information was used to obtain a search warrant for the residence. I kind of like the idea that, you know, Sergeant Barrow, you know, and our other, you know, deputies, they go the extra mile and just don't take the site or the arrest, but they go further, you know, get that search warrant so we can search the residence and detect other criminal activity. And during the service of that search warrant, more drugs and weapons were located in the house, and the driver and passenger of the vehicle, as well as the tenant of the house, were arrested for various drug and weapons-related offenses, and their court proceedings are pending. We're actively involved in, of course, local government due to attendance and participation in, you know, state council meetings. We directly support city staff by offering, you know, our assistance and support, and especially in the public safety matters. Deputies participate in every facet of life within the city and support nearly every event the city has to offer, from railroad days to Dogwood Days, Roof Fest, the Medal in the Mountain, and the Palo Alto Chamber Orchestra, and more. And we help with road closures and traffic control for homecoming parades, soapbox derbies. We're looking good in that way. Candles in the Canyon, and many other events during the year, and we collaborate with local groups to help sponsor and support school activities such as bike rodeos, updating school safety action plans, speaking with after-school safe classes, and high school student groups. You know, I got to give this credit, I got to give some credit to Sergeant Barrow. These are his words, I can't steal these magnificent poetic words. "When the river rises, we're there to help. When the hills are on fire, we're there to help. When you have a medical emergency, we're there to help. When the city needs us and we, special services are needed, we're there to help. When you need us, we're there." And I wanted to mention a couple other things, is, as you know, because you contracted the sheriff's office, we have a lot of additional services that we can provide, like our SWAT team, our dive team, our major crimes unit, our forensic technician, our chief deputy coroner, our hostage negotiator, our search and rescue team. We also have Siski unified major investigation team, the drug task force works hard drugs and do work down here. And we also belong to the North State Marijuana Investigation Team, which is a regional major team that works mostly drugs, and they're led by California Department of Justice. They're regionally based out of Redding, and we have a sergeant on that task force, and they just got a, because we're a high-intensity drug trafficking area, our county, one of only a few in the state and the country. And I just went to Washington DC last week, they paid for us to go back there because our NISMA team got a special award from the National HIDA Organization, and the APD Drug Zar was there, some senators, and I also attended a conference. And there is money that's being allocated to California and the nation to deal with the overwhelming problem we have with opioids. Methamphetamine is kind of making a comeback. We do have, we do have meth problems here, we have opioid problems, including heroin. Fentanyl is on the scene now, very, very dangerous. Car fentanyl is starting to show up, and that's fifty times more dangerous than heroin. And of course, we have an overwhelming problem with illegal marijuana, not to be confused with the medicinal and the lawful recreational marijuana, but the illegal marijuana is being grown either on private property or in public land areas. And we also have a Siski Interagency Marijuana Investigation Team that deals with those private property issues, and then we partner with the Siski County District Attorney's Office. We also have a jail, our jail's the only jail in the county, and we only have a hundred and three plus four beds for medical, so we have a hundred and seven total beds. We're full almost all the time, we hold nothing but felons, but the board supervisors have actually supported us, and it looks like if the project works, because we have twenty-seven million dollars that were allocated by AB nine hundred funds to the board, Escape and Community Corrections, twenty-seven million. In the future, it looks like we're going to take over Juvenile Hall because they don't have very many inmates, take those forty beds and build a hundred and twenty-bed facility as an annex with that twenty-seven million from the state lease revenue bonds, and we should have a capacity of anywhere from a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty compared to the, a little over a hundred we have now, which would be great because we can't keep misdemeanors and a lot of petty criminals that are creating problems in our communities, we can't keep them in jail. It's like a revolving door. Also, I want to, I want to commend the city council and, you know, Mr. Mayor and the county, the city staff, you've just been extraordinary partners with us, and I want to commend the people of Dunsmere for being so supportive of us. And just a few examples, I was invited by city councilman Kaisler to attend the mental health care coalition, and I just attended the second meeting this week. We had our first meeting about three weeks ago, and that's a great coalition of county and city stakeholders, and I think we're really making progress. Dunsmere has also been an active member of the homeless coalition, which kind of came out of the Team Shasta and kind of morphed into a big county-wide undertaking, and we had point-in-time count that right now, I believe the count is like eighty-seven homeless, and we know we have more than that really, but it's a good start because we didn't have any counts, and now we're going to become part of the homeless management information system, we're going to plug people into that system and hopefully get more funds. And Dunsmere obviously has a transient population, and some homeless people, and some homeless kids that we're focusing attention on through this coalition and through this organization that we participate in. I also want to commend the city for being so faithful, not only to, you know, to law enforcement and the public safety in general, and I know that the fire department would echo my, my comments, but also last year was a great year for veterans. I think the city council, and I know that, I know that Mr. Mayor, you've been involved, and, you know, of course, city councilman Kaisler's been heavily involved, and we had that flight pole and Mark and Mari, and all of you, Bryce, and I know Josh, everybody's been, been involved last year, taking those extra steps to recognize veterans, put that new flight pole in, and we had a special ceremony, we had a parade, and doing some things that most cities don't do to support veterans. And the sheriff's office is in charge of the Veterans Service Office in the county, we're one, a couple. I just got back from the Veterans Leadership Council meeting, and I look forward to do more of those events with you, and you always honor veterans, you always put that flag up front, and you always give us every opportunity to honor those who have served, and their family members and friends, and those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. So I thank you for that. And also, you know, we have a sheriff's conference in Mount Shasta every year, the California Sheriff's Association, they have a conference every year, and I always bring, there's always sheriffs that want to fish, so I always bring the sheriffs to Dunsmere, and we always go down to the Sacramento River. And Dave's given up, you know, a couple of secret spots, you know, but they love it here, and we go down to, and we, and I lost a big one, I lost a monster last year, I mean, it must have been that big, I lost it, and the sheriffs are going, oh, yeah, sure. I said, no, I lost a really big one, because you've got some big bit of fish in there. But every time I take the sheriffs, because they're from all over the state, down there to fish, they always catch fish. And even the ones that don't fish a lot, always catch three, four, five, six fish. Some of them catch ten or eleven, we throw most of them back, but they always have fun, we always eat here locally, and most of them say, I'm coming back. So, that's, that's, that's a positive thing, and I appreciate the fact that we have that kind of atmosphere here where people really enjoy coming. Now, before I close, I just thought I'd mention some of the more prevalent crime trends, just so you're aware of that, and I'll also, you know, we're here also to answer any questions the citizens or the city council may have. Well, just to give you an idea, last year, we responded to twenty-two assault and battery calls, fifty alarm calls, nineteen animal calls, we get a lot of animal calls. We had forty-seven assists, eight auto thefts, auto thefts seem to be kind of edging up, and that's a good lesson to everybody, lock your cars, don't leave your keys in the car. We had, unfortunately, we had forty burglaries, nineteen child abuse cases, eighty civil services or, or service-related calls, a hundred and twenty disturbing the peace calls, four drunk drivers, fourteen drunken publics, twenty-four domestic violence, still a big problem. Let me see, nine embezzlements, three elder abuses, that kind of concerns me, you know, getting older, elder abuse, that really bothers me. But, let me see, we had forty-nine miscellaneous cases that required follow-up. We had four identity thefts, one kidnapping. Let me see, seventeen mental health care related calls, and this is one thing we're really working on, like this, this coalition, we're really trying to provide people the services they need, because we have so many people, especially with the proliferation of drugs, we have a lot of people with mental health care issues. So we're trying to plug them in the system so we don't arrest them, because there are too many people who go to jail shouldn't be there, there shouldn't be mental health care facilities. We had, we had ten narcotics-related cases, we had ninety-five suspicious subjects that we went out with, fifteen probation searches, five prowlers, forty-one petty thefts, and let me see, two robberies, three runways, seventy-five total school security checks, three hundred and fifty-one security checks, six, six, sex offenses, fourteen suicide attempts or actual suicides, fourteen traffic collisions, forty-two traffic-related incidents, mostly traffic citations, fifty trespassing, we made a hundred and ten traffic stops, we had twenty-five vandalism cases, we served fifteen arrest warrants, and for a total of one thousand nine hundred and seventy calls for service and a hundred and eighty-nine criminal cases. So that's just a broad-based interview, overview of what, what we did as a department. Well, my, my main reason to be here as the head of my agency is to just thank you for the great support and the outstanding accomplishments related to public safety that you do for us and your citizens every day. This is, this is just a pleasure working with you, and thank you, and I salute you for a job well done. And we've got three of us here, if anybody has any questions, we will answer any questions you may have.
Sheriff, what I'd like to do is first of all ask Mr. Craig if you'd like to have questions, go around to the council chamber here in council.
Sure, yeah, well, first of all, thank you. I wanted to just confirm the statistics you gave just there at the end. That was department-wide or county-wide or just in Dunsmere?
Dunsmere.
Okay.
So that was Dunsmere?
That's Dunsmere.
Yeah.
All those, all those statistics at the end there?
Yeah, I can give you a copy, just a moment.
You mentioned briefly there about, about the, the mental health facilities rather than taking them to jail.
Right.
That's something that I agree with. What mental health facilities does the county have?
Well, one of the things I'm recommending, if we build our new jail, it'll be built and occupied by 2022.
and occupied by twenty twenty-two, is that the old jail be used for mental health care beds. Right now, we have behavioral health services. We have some service for veterans, like veterans theoretically can go like to, uh, White City, places like that, but the facility doesn't exist here. If we have, uh, the problem is when we get a mentally ill person in jail, and do you think mentally ill people sometimes commit crimes? Yes, they do. And we have, and I'm not trying to beat up on any of the other agencies, but I'll give you, uh, the best example I can think of is a guy named Joe in Wayrica. He, at one time, was a very successful individual. He had a family. He had a normal life. For whatever reason, he got addicted to drugs. Uh, his, uh, his marriage ended. He became homeless and he developed mental health care, uh, issues very severely. Well, one day he goes in the post office in Wayrica one night because it was cold, builds, uh, starts a fire in a wastepaper basket because he's cold. He's freezing to death. The police department shows up. Well, he committed burglary because he entered a building with the intent to commit grand or petty theft or felony. Two, he was vandalizing federal property. And three, he was committing an act of arson because he started a fire. So they could throw him in jail. They, we had to put, uh, the dependents, you know, the male pampers, the, the adult pampers on him because he couldn't even go to the restroom on his own all the time. So we went to the court and say, please, would you, uh, we have a process where there, where we can adjudicate a mental health care referral, uh, to compel, to transport the individual to a mental health care facility. Sometimes it takes three to five weeks to get that, uh, court, uh, determination or that ruling. And we have to go to Woodland, we have to go to Napa, we have to go to the Bay Area, we have to Tascadaro, sometimes we have to go to Los Angeles. We've gone to places and we show up, oh, sorry, that we don't have a bed. The good news is that California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, our county, and many others are working together to, uh, to, to fund more beds for mentally ill people. Uh, I think that, I got in law enforcement forty years ago, well, forty-one, over forty years ago, and, and in the seventies, those of us who were around in, in California start defunding a lot of the mental health care facilities. We don't have adequate healthcare services for the mentally ill. But, uh, groups like this that we have, we have other groups. I can tell you that we have excellent cooperation through the county and, uh, through, uh, some of our city partners, and we're developing solutions. But a lot of it is identifying people who are mentally ill upfront and getting them into treatment or programs. Now, we have a community corrections partnership because when the governor gave us responsibility, us counties, responsibility for nonviolent offenders back to twenty-eleven with AB one oh nine, this realignment, the governor promised us funding, and the governor has honored his, uh, promise and has given us funding. And some of that funding goes to specialized programs, especially, you know, for inmates that provide them, you know, mental health care counseling, uh, you know, the, uh, education, uh, uh, you know, anger management, if someone needing anger management training or, or counseling, and, and other programming that, that will help them become more successful citizens. So the county's heading in the right direction, doing a lot of really good work, but we still have more needs to be done. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Craig?
Yeah.
You're right, sir.
Yeah, of course. And I, um, so in your opinion, I mean, what can we as citizens of Dunsborough or members of the, of the local government here, here to advocate to our representatives for more? I mean, is it just more funding that we need?
I would participate in the coalition that we have, that, uh,
The mental health equation?
Councilman, uh, Heisler's helped develop because it's multidisciplinary. We have people in the schools, we have people from the county, we have law enforcement, we have, uh, uh, and we even have a representative from the Rotary Club.
Teachers.
Teachers, doctors, uh, you know, healthcare professionals. And what we're doing is we're networking, identifying resources. And if we identify people that need the services, then we try to plug them into the services readily available. And being proactive instead of waiting until somebody is threatening to jump off the bridge. Uh, and, uh, you know, we have other groups, like we have Sarah, uh, Siskiho against OREX addiction. And we've worked together as a coalition and we're lowering the incidence of opioid abuse. And that's helping with our suicide because most suicides in the county, three years ago, it was, we had sixteen and then we had eleven. And last year, uh,
Fourteen.
Last year, the suicides were down, I think it was nine or something like that. So the suicide rate is going down, the opioid abuse is going down, which helps these, uh, mental health care, uh, numbers. But all of us, you know, it's, it's really a community effort that has to be, uh, on the forefront every day. And I think this coalition, we're making great progress. And we're also identifying, you know, these groups, you can network and identify funds that are relevant. And, uh, and I'll tell you, the Family Resource Center you have here is doing a wonderful job because that's kind of a first, first stop. And they're, they're great about, if you have a problem of, of diverting you to where you need to go, whether it's food, it's housing, it's mental health care counseling, it's a referral to the behavioral health services. Now, our deputies also, we have the ability to refer people to, uh, behavioral health services to help them get some kind of counseling that they need to try to keep them out of trouble.
I just have one other question, which is, um, you know, obviously, uh, in the wake of the shooting yesterday, we're all very heightened awareness of, of, um, safety at schools. And, uh, obviously, we have the, you know, the department's been involved when you said, okay, the school safety action plan, so that's obviously very important. I'm just wondering, I was reading this morning that, that a count of one of the teachers in the shooting yesterday said the enormous amount of training that they had received just in the last year, um, she basically attributed to a significant, um, life-saving initiative. And I'm just wondering, what, what training, um, could, could our schools be getting or have been getting, um, to, to, to be trained in, in that way?
Bryce, did I?
Yeah.
They've had two, um, actual shooter, gun shooter on campus at the high school and the elementary school. And I am honored to say, and I have no doubt in my mind, you show up at Dunsborough Elementary School and the kids will beat you up. They are not scared. So it's, they, 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 they've had actual training, they, they know what to do. Um, and I, I'm pretty proud of them. So I, uh,
Right.
I, I, I got no, Dunsborough Elementary School is tough. Them kids are tough. So, and, and the high school, the same thing, the precautions they took, the intense drills that they had, it was pretty cool. I don't know if you were part of that, but, uh,
Greg, Captain Haltman is our intel, uh, manager. He, he kinda manages criminal intelligence. And, uh, we had some active shooter training last year. And, uh, what we've, we, uh, have actually given the instructions, we, we talked about that today. You're absolutely right. The active shooter incident could occur anywhere. It really could. And remember, we had an active shooter incident down in Rancho Tejano a few months ago, Tejano County. And that individual, uh, killed, uh, I think it was seven people. But that individual could have killed many more people because he tried to break, he drove through the gate in the, uh, at the school, but his vehicle got hung up, which delayed him. And he had a jam in his, he had AR fifteen nut weapon, semi-automatic weapon, the, the gun jam. And before he got to school, a janitor and some quick thinking teachers shut down the school and there was a lockdown. Had he been, uh, able to reach that school perimeter quicker, uh, he may have killed a couple dozen kids because he had the ammunition and he had the, uh, the mindset to do that. So what we, we had discussed today is we're gonna have all our, our sergeants review the current emergency plans that all the schools have. Uh, we're also, I, we're gonna, we're gonna meet with Kermit Walters and talk about not only school safety and active shooter issues, but also things like, uh, drug, uh, issues because we had a, uh, unfortunately, we had a fourteen-year-old boy that drowned in Siskiho Lake back on September first of last year. And, and that was a drug and alcohol related, uh, incident involving him and other kids. So, and, and the, the intention is to give the, all the schools offer more assistance and support. Also, I, I don't think I mentioned it, we have Dara coming back.
Right on.
And Dara, we're gonna start it in, uh, Scott Valley, but I made a commitment to coalition meeting the other day that we'll also bring Dara down here. And I think, uh, and one of the issues is, uh, also, you, you may have something to add, but visiting the schools, uh, asking the, the teachers, the faculty, the parents to let us know if they, if they see any warning signs, uh, pending trouble, whether from parents or from, uh, kids. Uh, you know, giving suggestions on physical security measures, simple, uh, physical security measures can be taken, marking schools, uh, so that we know what classrooms, uh, you know, in case we have to respond. We also, in our, uh, most of us carry devices that are able to, to defeat blocking mechanisms in case we have to gain access to a, uh, a building in the school that has been locked by an assailant. Because the, uh, the strategy now is, a few years ago, we would wait till we got backup and then go in. Now, the, the situation is, most of these incidents are, uh, are over within four minutes. If we arrive and there's shooting going on, we're going in. Even if there's one person, we would prefer two, but if he, if he or she's gotta wait, we're going in, try to save those kids. And we're also working with the fire department and the, uh, well, I do, we just had a conversation with Phil Anzo today from Cal Fire about how it, where our response, so that the medical response is there in case we have a match casualty. So just, those are some of the things we're doing. We gotta do more. And, uh, it's really gonna be up to the school superintendents, the twenty-five or twenty-six in the, in the county, what they wanna do. We're there for them and will do whatever they ask us to do.
Mr. Heisler?
Thank you. Thank you.
It's an honor to work with you, sir. Uh, I praise your whole department, everything you guys do. I support, I support you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
The one thing that you said tonight in your report kinda struck me is nineteen child abuse. That's a too big a number. Four adult abuse, that's a too big a number. I've got ten burglaries, but I got nineteen campfire abuses, four old people. We need it.
And another thing?
That's on the community, that's on us. We need to keep our eyes open and report things that if we're out of the ordinary or if you think something's going wrong. I commend the one person that said, hey, I, I snapchatted a picture of my friend, something's wrong, I'm looking for a lead. Uh, I commend your officers for leading that investigation and getting to theirs, so. But, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And it's a pleasure and honor working with you and everyone on the, on the city council and the staff and the citizens. But another thing about the coalition was there are kids, there are a lot of kids in Dunsborough and Ray Keller knows this, uh, and you have some very astute, uh, teachers and administrators here. There are kids that are homeless that are in the school. There's couch stars or, or couch surfing. And there may be like, and, and we have the backpack program, the Rotary, uh, is, and we're gonna help with that, but imagine, we have, uh, at least a couple dozen kids that probably don't have a home that are going to high school. So through this coalition, we identified that, and we're gonna try to do something about it. Good job.
Thank you for your, uh, for your presence and simply liking, uh, the county. You said it was an increase in turkey high blood drugs. Does that mean that you've actually seen them in Siskiho County?
Yes. Uh, unfortunately, you know, one of the problems of Siskiho County is geography. It's the fifth largest county geographically in the state. It's got like six thousand one hundred and seventy-two square miles. So the perfect conclaves within which to engage in criminal activity or drugs. Dunsborough actually does real well compared to, uh, other, some other communities. And we're seeing, uh, you know, for one thing, we have one of the big drug corridors of the nation right out here at High Five. We have State Route eighty-nine, we have, uh, US ninety-seven, we have State Route ninety-six. Right now, the prevailing drug, we got a heroin problem, we got a prescription drug problem, we got a meth problem, uh, in Siskiho County. We have, uh, we have some cocaine. Sometime, we even, uh, see a little bit of PCP. And marijuana is just absolutely out of control.
I know, but what really, uh, you know, what I heard was that you said fentanyl was, you know, beginning to appear in car fentanyl.
Yeah.
I mean, you've actually seen that appear in?
Yes, we had an accidental death involving a fentanyl. And I'll give you a quick example. When I was back at Haida is, uh, and it wasn't here, but it was in Portland, Oregon. There was a guy on the dark web in Philadelphia, and these task forces in Oregon and Pennsylvania are working together. There was a guy on the dark web that made over two thousand transactions for fentanyl on the dark web. He was getting fentanyl from China and sending it to people. He was responsible for seven overdose deaths just in the Portland area. They had just arrested him for murder. They were able to track him down, they arrested him for murder because he knew or should've known this fentanyl is very, very potent. And now we're seeing car fentanyl, which is, it was fifty times more potent than heroin and fentanyl is, uh, something like fifteen times more potent, very, very potent. And we did have an overdose death last year, at least one. And I knew the woman, uh, and she was taking narcotic analgesics and she had a fentanyl. And some of the kids are using fentanyl, they're putting, they're taking the patches and they're sucking on the patches. And, uh, it's very deadly. And, uh, if you're exposed to fentanyl, you could be hospitalized, it's very potent stuff. And they're telling us, uh, you know, the authorities are saying, don't even touch it, don't breathe it, or you go to the hospital. We've had, police officers have had to go to the hospital. I went to a narcotics officer's, uh, conference about three months ago. The California Narcotics Officers Association, uh, one of their foremost experts on heroin said, in a few years, you may not see heroin at all because a lot of the laboratories in Mexico are manufacturing fentanyl and, and, uh, and China is manufacturing a lot of fentanyl and sending it to the states. And it's a lot more potent. And the heroin that's deadly actually is laced with fentanyl. And now we're seeing car fentanyl, which is actually a elder tranquilizer. So we're seeing some very disturbing trends. And unfortunately, in California, the liberalization of drug laws, like Glock forty-seven, now almost all drugs are misdemeanors now, they're not, uh, felonies. And also liberalization of marijuana. Marijuana, believe it or not, you know, I, I mean, I, I firmly believe based on my forty years of experience as a gateway drug, its costs and pros. And we also have concentrated cannabis, honey oil labs. We had a house blow up, I should've mentioned that. We had a house blow up in Dunsborough last year because it was a honey oil lab or THC extraction lab. So, yeah, very dangerous trends. I, I think that we're fortunate because we have these drug task forces, you know, we're working on it. And I think we're making progress, but nevertheless, still a big problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, or Sheriff. Uh, I'd like to ask one question. I've heard about, um, the fact that there is a gang from Mexico operating out of Dunsborough, is there any truth to that or is that just a rumor?
Uh, from time to time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Sergeant Merrill what he's seeing. From time to time, we do have gangs in, in, uh, Siskiho County. For example, most of the marijuana that's being cultivated in public land areas are cartels from Mexico. We have Serenios and Norteños. Uh, most of them are in, uh, Bute Valley. We have some motorcycle, uh, outlaw motorcycle, uh, gang members. And we do have, uh, you know, you'll, you'll have people passing through, but. Do you wanna elaborate on that, what you've seen in Dunsborough?
Um, I'm not aware of, of any cell or group that actively activate in Dunsborough as far as that. Having said that, um, many of those people that the sheriff had talked about as well have very distinct, clear Stevie King affiliations. So the people coming through and living here, whether they're staying with friends, they're trying to escape trouble or something like that, there's no doubt that they're not coming through Dunsborough saying, prepare the time. through Dunsmere saying, great, all right. But as far as legitimate, as active as a group, absolutely not.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sergeant. Sheriff, if you will, I'd like to open the podium for a quick set of comments in case anyone has any questions.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, we'll stand by if anybody has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you to the City Council for providing me the time and staff, thank you.
You know what? Okay, so I'm going to open the podium for a moment for questions, specifically to Sheriff, if we have none of those who would like.
I just have a really mundane question after all that.
Not mundane.
Yes, it is. I live on South First Street in which you know is outside of the city, it's in the county. And I'm just wondering, when we have problems, do the local Dunsmere officers, do they respond to us in the county as well as the city?
Yes, no, we do.
Other questions? I'll close the podium, the podium comment. Thank you very much, Sheriff, I appreciate that report, and I'm sure the citizens appreciate your service, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have committee reports. The first one is economic development tourism. The only thing that I can say right now that we're working on, in terms of a project that can really make a difference is the development east of the airport. We are working on getting a topographical map that will allow us to take the first look at how we might be able to work out some sort of industrial park at there. And Richard Denjes, Chamber Director, and has background in this area, is working with folks. The idea is, is that somewhere down the line, we could open up an area where there could be a number of what are called tilt tops, which are, you lay a flat concrete slab and you actually pour the concrete to make the walls tilt them up, et cetera, et cetera. It's pretty amazing, I didn't realize so many buildings in our country are made like that. But the idea would be that this would be an area for distribution centers, other things, but what the city would be able to get out of it would be the income from the lease and et cetera. So it's a project we're working on, it's in certain stages, but that's all I can say on that. Next, for the finance committee, you did meet, didn't you, Sheriff?
We did meet, and frankly, I forgot to prepare notes for this updated council. I remember I thought I had, we were meeting the enterprise funds. Could you give us a board from that meeting?
Yeah, the staff helped with the committee members and went through the enterprise fund to look at the, how the mid-year review of where the fund is in relation to the budget. And there were certain specific areas, but then a couple of funds that were over and under, those were being discussed in the brief sense, and the meeting went for an hour and a half. And what I'm looking at doing next is taking anything that we're going to have as far as budget adjustments that may need to be done, props to the City Council possibly at the next City Council meeting, to adjust our budget upward as additional revenues that came in, or additional expenses that may have to go out for council consideration.
I'll just add that the, I don't recall anything off the top of my head that was of real concern other than outside of stuff that we're already addressing. So, you know, the sewer enterprise and the solid waste enterprise are both undergoing weight study soon, and obviously we have a task force set up or a ad hoc committee set up to work on this issue, so. Is there anything?
And then while we're on finances, the other question I would have is, what is the deadline? Can we have published a deadline or stated for the TUT distribution requests?
Yeah, there's, what I would like to point out to TUT, and it's on our website as well, is there's no deadline for application, but if you want, if the community wants to get an application in for consideration in this cycle, this budget cycle go around, it's recommended to get it in by the end of this month. We will continue to accept them year round, but as we start to pull together the budget and look at requests of people that are looking for grants, essentially grant funds for the TUT, once we start that process, there's going to come a time where, okay, if anything coming in after this time will go in the next cycle. So I would recommend anybody that wants to apply, get that in by the end of this month.
Thank you, Sheriff. Public facilities, will we get that soon, right? Did we keep that open, is that still alive, public facilities, do I need to close that?
Yeah, but I'm not on it anymore.
No, but we still have it though?
Yeah.
You just have a bit. Okay. Airport committee.
I'll apologize.
Okay, so basically, what we're looking at right now is, we're trying our best to come up with a way to come up with a match for this particular year's set of projects. We're also at the same time recognizing that we may have to pull off on that. The problem we have is, is that with funding the way things are right now, it's hard to look at getting money out that we have the budget in order to cover the twelve thousand dollar match. So we're working, I know that Mr. Denjes and City Manager are working together with Carol Ford and also Keith Hildebrandt from our dive, our associations. And what they're going to try and do is come up with the best plan to move forward. We want to restate the message we're giving to the FAA, as I said, we're going through a severe economic problem right now, and so we're trying to be responsible and understand that at the moment, we couldn't come up, if we had to, we're committed to come up with twelve thousand dollars. So we're trying to find a way to work this and we'll be able to use that. Is there anything else, like the L M R, pretty much what we have in place there? So in terms of a longer picture, all, the idea would be that we would hopefully have some movement, some revenue coming in from various aspects, but particularly from this development, if we give it time to get rolling. And the goal would be to use revenue from that to be self-sustaining with the airport, but obviously with the financial situation right now, we recognize it's not a time to be asking for twelve thousand dollars, which is not essential critical to us right now. Any last questions while we're on that?
So, we're talking about the match for the annual grants that you can get from the FAA.
Right, so here's, what happened is, we're finishing up the airport layout plan, we already have the pavement management plan. Well, these come together and say, okay, here's what you got to do next. And they got to do next right now is runway. And so what we're at is, we know we need to do runway, and Diver Associations, I'm sure is going to want to be that person, but they're going to come in and design the actual changes to the runway. And that's what this year's fiscal year was gamed out to be, was do the design work, and in the following year, you'd be able to do that. Now, the amount is, I know it's fifty-five percent, which is, around twelve thousand dollars is what it is this year. So we're looking at saying we can put it back to next year, just put back a whole airport runway improvement for a year.
And the idea of the grindings being in kind?
Yeah, the problem is, we were trying to come up with something in kind, and the reason that fell apart is because this particular job here is very engineering, design oriented, and there's nothing that we could give to that process. For instance, if our city manager was an engineer, we could really get some funding out of that in terms of in kind, but the in kind has to match what's being done, what's being done.
So you're saying there's a preliminary step before implementation?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so the grindings would be when we actually turn around and do those things.
Right, okay.
Questions? Okay, next item then is emergency plant task force, and I heard there's news on that.
Not exactly on the, well, the emergency task force, but we had a, finally, we had a meeting, I think we had Tuesday with FEMA, and I was really glad, we had to be, you know, we were obligated to go there, and I understand why, because it shows that we were collaborating with all the other localities, but what I got out of the most is that we met the FEMA head. And it was a small group, and we were well represented, because we had Mark and Arlene and myself, and there was no one else, no other little locality that had that much representation. But the, you know, the offshoot was that we have until March fifteenth to put a letter of intent in, and I'm assured that we are going to meet that deadline to write our own plan. And the FEMA director of, you know, FEMA nine, gave us, you know, quite a lot of useful advice to, you know, do a multi-agency with the high school and the elementary school, it increases our chances of funding. And right now, California has something like three million dollars in federal government taxes because of all the fires. And we can get funded, pretty much, he's pretty sure that we'll get a planning, we can get a planning fund to put together our, our plan, because it has to be pretty comprehensive. And as a matter of fact, it was pretty amazing that one of the other representatives from one of the localities says, oh yeah, Dunsmere, they're at risk for everything. You know, the only thing we're not at risk for is a tsunami. You know, as far as everything else, we're at high risk for, you know, the four major risks that California worries about is tsunamis, earthquake, flooding and fire. Well, except for the tsunami, we need the other three, and then we've got the railway, you know, the railroad coming through and I-5 going right there, so he says, you guys are at risk for everything, he said, we know that already. So, but anyhow, our first deadline is March fifteenth, is just a letter of intent so that we can be considered for funding for, and I'm pretty sure that we'll be funded.
Great.
And then we can ask for project funds, because that's what I'm waiting for.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
May I just interject to you, just because I can't find another place to put this in, it's not really with regard to the emergency plant task force, but with regard to fire safety in our area, someone from, someone I've worked with on a project for the heroin thing, who is, I can't remember her title, the Pacific Forest Trust, but she works for the Pacific Forest Trust, called me today and told me that they are working with a private landowner, she just, she wouldn't say who it was, but she just said, private landowner, who has, basically has all the forest around us. So I didn't know if that meant Roseberry here, or Roseberry over here, or whoever it is, but she said that they're working with them on a conservation easement, and Pacific Forest Trust is interested in it because it would create this huge swath of conserved land that they, protected land, that would sort of tie in with projects that they've got covered in the cloud and, I think Manchester area. Irregardless of that, regardless of that, there's, she basically wanted to know if we were okay with, with Cal Fire doing some fuels management and some treatment of the lands around Dunsmere.
And you said, of course, we are.
Right, sorry, yeah, so, yes, I said that. It seemed to me, one thing I asked her was, you know, are, is this like state mandated, or is this mandated from the Pacific Forest Trust? If they're going to hold the easement, that they would mandate, that they do these? And she said, no, it's all voluntary. And I said, okay, you know, like, are they, are they concerned about, would they do that because they're concerned about liability, like if a fire started and it spread to Dunsmere, that they would have some liability? And she basically said, well, no, they're actually worried about fires starting in Dunsmere and spreading out to their property. So it's just, it's something that we should be notified of, just because Cal Fire might be contacting the city at some point on some sort of collaboration. There's no expenditure of funds or anything, it would just be, I don't exactly know what the nature of the relationship would be, other than that Cal Fire might talk to us about fuels management on private land just outside the city limits at some point.
Can I add to, which really has nothing to do with the emergency task force, but while I'm on the fire safe council, I'm sure all of you realize that we did a state of the art, you know, community wildfire protection plan. And that has had some nice offshoots, because now Mount Chester is following ours, and I've also been contacted by the county, the risk management, to, because they have to also, in the county plan, there is to how many localities have actually got a risk plan, and we have a fire, that's the one thing we have done. But we're, Arlene and I are also going to be probably going up to Mount Chester so that we have a collaboration, you know, between the two cities on, you know, some joint project, so.
Good, I heard some good news.
We're trying to, I'm trying to find monies from wherever I can, and right now, it just seems that the federal government is our best shot.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Moving onward, we have Veterans Memorial, nothing's really reported on that right now. I know that Sheriff, we're looking down the line, talking about what we want to do for Memorial Day, and so we'll be getting, I guess the best way to reach out to you or, I'm sorry, I just realized I made a mistake. Josh, did you have something you wanted to add before on that?
Nothing additional, but I was going to say that I did hear a little bit about this project of fuel arrangements that would be going on because of a conservation easement potentially going in place. Basically just self-talk.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sorry.
It's basically what?
Self-talk. Like, not very, no.
Oh, do you just, you guys just volunteer Dunsmere into any?
Yeah, you would, yeah.
Any, any few more reduction?
I'll need to tell them.
When you mentioned the, the prevention plan, that was called, she referenced that specifically, and she said, I think that's, I think basically Cal Fire is going to approach either the Fire Safety Council or the city to make sure whatever they're doing is sort of in line with that. I think that's the idea.
Yeah, because right now, Mount Chester is following that one, and, good.
Thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption, Sheriff. So I'd like to look into that, because I know we want to follow through on what we did last year, and look forward to in the future developing some sort of memorial, but obviously we're developing it right now, so. Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We're going to be fixing the fountain up here, but I think we're waiting for better weather, yeah, right?
So, okay, next, Mossbray Trail, any news this part?
Unfortunately, no. I reached out to our representative earlier this week, he said that they still have not set a date for this sort of trilateral meeting that they've been requesting by Saint Germain Foundation to have, and so we're just waiting for them to set a date.
Okay.
No update at this point, though. I was, I'm sorry, I was told before that it would be mid-February.
You're worried about February?
Or there, so, hopefully so.
Next, we have Broadband. I believe, you may have said this last time, Mr. Craig, I'm going to answer right now, the information that we got back is a lot of valuable information, but I think that all of us agree right now that with the situation the way it is, with our finances of the city right now, we're really not in a position to take a bold move and develop a form of physical fiber. And so at the moment, a lot of things change, and I think I myself am hoping that very soon, a new technology will ripen enough so that we can take advantage of it, and that is five G, not to be confused with the five G mobile, which is one aspect of five G speed, but there's something called five G Wi-Fi, and although it's not available right now so that we can take advantage of it, the idea would be that you'd be able to provide gigabit speeds, which would, if you've got ten megabit speeds right now, it would be ten times that, I'm sorry, yeah, ten times that. And so the point is that if that comes along, we'd be able to put a tower up somewhere, maybe one or two or three, but they would be able to provide Broadband gigabit speeds. But right now, to try and compete with the established folks, it's almost impossible. Would you like to add anything to that analysis?
Uh, no, I mean, I'm maybe not as bullish on the new technology, being some sort of savior for us. Given that it's an infrastructure problem, and five G requires fiber to be in the ground too, you know, the backhaul has to be supplied by wired fiber. We don't necessarily have a backhaul problem, at least the big carriers don't have a backhaul problem, they're able to provide it. It would just be a matter of- It would just be a matter of, you know, whether or not we're gonna undertake some community initiative or not, I think that, that's not clear right now.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I did talk with Mr. Vince Riddick from Northland Communications today, and he is telling us that because of the competition, this free market thing, that prices are going down right now, his prices are going down, and because of competition that's being passed on to lower prices for the people, so that's the way the capital system seems to be supposed to work. So we're gonna have to rely on that until things change.
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
Was this a report that we had gotten back from the contract?
Yeah, we have a representative here, I guess we may want to do that.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Yeah, okay. So can we get that on agenda? There's no objection, can we do that?
No objection.
Well, I, I would like to, has the, the three cities gotten together?
No.
About the summary or something?
Well, I know that, I was told by Vince that Mount Shasta has it on their agenda for their council meeting, I believe it's the one coming up.
To, to present like a summary of the findings?
Yeah, and so we can see what they do, and kind of kick you back off of that. Because they'll, I know they've done a lot more of the damage, the looking at the numbers and coming up with alternative connections.
We'll say I've been holding my breath for this, but we'll say that I've, I mean...
Oh, you're up to holding your, communication is still in hibernation?
Hibernation. Um, there is a, Tim's on the air, right? Tim will, Tim will up the chair, but yeah, March 7th.
Is that the first Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
The first Wednesday in March is the next beautification meeting.
The beautification committee will bloom.
That's right.
Seven.
We were, I thought we were gonna wait till May, but since we're having this false, it's spring anyway, we'll maybe.
I can change any minute.
Kansas Task Force, back to you, Mr. Craig, you're a busy person.
Um, we met last Tuesday, basically we're trying to, we're focused on application process at this point, developing an application process for whatever, whatever activities we choose to allow in the city. There are, there are, there's some concern that, first of all, that we would probably not have the resources, well, we've, our city manager has explicitly stated that we don't have the resources to really process the applications, and so we're looking to hire a consultant that can process applications for us, and that would just be paid for in the application fees and the cost, no additional, you know, cost of the city. But we're kind of, right now trying to figure out how to handle, there's some aspects of the process that we're going through to develop applications that may require a consultant as well, and so all of those, all of those concern, all of those costs are reimbursable through present fees and all of that, but there may be some upfront costs that we are trying to figure out how to, how to pay for, or defer, or whatever we can, whatever we can do to get the expertise that we need now to develop the applications and then process applications without actually having the fees to pay for that service come in yet. So I think that's something that the city manager is looking into.
Good, and if I can add to that, I talked with John Kenny today about the, the need to move forward as far as getting results, and in specifically regard to costs. So I am going to be sending out emails requesting the two council members that are on the Maryland Task Force Committee to look at their schedules for the 21st, next Tuesday, after 1:30. Just looked at scheduling a conference call with our city attorney, possibly a consultant, but it may just be the city's attorney, staff and two council members.
I was in Waikika and I was too tired in the big side, and I did not go at Tuesday's.
The feeling is going to be, not this coming Tuesday, something, my conference call, but it'll be the following Tuesday.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna declare a five-minute recess. Call the meeting back order, I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Spurlock has joined us. Thank you. And so next, we have announcing some public comments. If there's anyone with a comment on the public, I'll open the podium to your comments.
Good evening, my whole mayor, city council members, city citizens of Dunsborough. My name is Chris Reese, and I want to introduce myself because actually it's quite coincidental that I was here for Mrs. Cross's award, and that was pretty great. She mentioned a few things, one of them was the planning commission, she thinks that they could use a pair of fresh eyes, and I'd like to be that set of fresh eyes for the city. I have filed out an application, but I wanted to put a face to the application and just introduce myself and let you know that I am very interested in this. I've lived in the city since April, I was the active chief of police here from 2012 to 2016. I'm very integrated with the citizens and the community and the inner workings and the outer workings of the community. I really love the people here, and I'd love to be back in the service, public service, and I think this is a great way to do it. My background is a little extensive, I have four years of active Navy, as Mr. Deutsch can attest to, three years of Army National Guard, and 22 years in law enforcement. And yeah, being in public service is a great interest, I now have ample free time when I'm not doing my, my other job. The evenings and afternoons seem to be free, and I'd love to be a part of the city. Thank you very much, and nice to see you all tonight.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you for throwing your hat in. You're welcome.
Excuse my coughing, I'm, I'm hopefully at the tail end of the crowd, but really just working on the coughing.
You should have seen it, three days. Okay, so any other public comments? I'll close the podium to public comments, and I'll start off with this, Shamsa.
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chris.
Um, not right now, I don't have nothing right now.
Mr. Spurlock?
Thank you for being so accommodating around my schedule. It's really hard not to say.
We sit there at night because we're too tired, so.
Monday to Thursday, it's...
We like to see you in uniform.
I feel odd in the uniform, I'm just, almost four years I've sat through the shorts and flip-flops.
I was gonna say, you got pants on, dude, pants!
I don't know, a little strange, but thank you so much for being accommodating.
Sure.
Seeing this sort of with me.
Your word. I'm not expecting the city clerk to add this to the official record, but I will note for the people present that Mr. Spurlock has lost 18 pounds.
Yay!
Hopefully he keeps going, too. What do they make you do, the, the, the running?
Uh, Mondays and Wednesdays is running, it seems like they do a minimum of six miles.
I think there was a, what's the start of, like, oh my god! Yeah, yeah, I forgot.
And Tuesdays and Thursdays is high intensity training, so.
Wow, intense.
It's, it's different every day, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Get ready. Another for me, thank you.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to point out is, I'd like to address the situation with broadcast. I actually put out on forum today that we had solved all the problems, it's gonna be broadcast live tonight. I walked in here, ordered today, they had two trucks from Northland Cable Communications back there, Vince Riddick, the local regional manager, is here, had two or three technicians, they had people back at the Northland office where they have to take the signal, they set all the equipment up, said it, I was walking in here, and they were saying, "There it was," and here we are.
And here we are, wah, wah, wah.
But I want to be clear, what's going on at this point in time, can't discuss what happened before, but in terms of what's going on right now, it's a situation with resolving this configuration that Northland has set up, and this is not something that Northland, number one, is required to do, nor is it something they're gonna charge us for. So they aren't very committed to the idea of getting us backed up, and I will make sure that not only will we have it backed up for the next meeting, but we'll have a phone number that we can call at a moment's notice if we do have a problem, and that's obviously what we need right now. With that in mind, that's all I have.
I have one more thing on, so you can come back to me. I, I would like to thank the sheriffs for their report tonight, it's nice to know pretty much everything you told us before the show. And another thing is, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and tell someone how proud I am of them in their efforts. And that's it. He's done good with his sauerkraut business, he's, he's, and, and when my doctor prescribes his sauerkraut to me...
Oh my god, you're actually gonna eat it?
No, I had to argue my doctor, but the point is, he prescribed it's sauerkraut, so I commend you, sir, all right? Good job, good job, well done. Remind me to send that check to your doctor. Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, your turn.
Thank you. I just want to make note to the public, as well as the council, that we did advertise for the rate study committee. The deadline, or actually, the first meeting is going to be February 26th, I think the deadline to apply, Julie, you remember, is it next Friday?
It's Monday.
Yeah, Monday, so the 26th, so.
What time?
Um, I think 5:30? I, I have to check.
Did you get any applicants?
No applicants yet, so beat the bushes, and I will check out, it's posted online, as well as we put it in the paper. The cutoff meeting is February 26th at 6:00 PM. So, oh, talked with Mike Rodriguez today, we're looking at beginning the park maintenance of Talon Valley Park beginning in March. So we've met with him and our staff, Bill, the fellow works, and we're looking at getting things going out there. We still have some contract stuff, we're, the council's already approved to have the contract done, but him and I have to sit down and get things signed. But we're moving forward with that, the trees are already blooming, or budding, so.
Oh, yeah.
And our new finance director is scheduled to begin work on Tuesday, so we've got just, just over, well, we have two weeks, the new finance director is gonna be working with Pam, so Pam's been finishing up with the auditor and doing her best to try to get ready to transition things up to finance.
Could you give us a little background, the public, a little background, who our new finance director is and the process that was, that went through? I was also a different struck at the time of the version of Mount Shasta.
Yeah, the, the process, we, we were given notice that our current finance director was resigning, and she's been wonderful in providing all the support and helping to transition. She was, one, our current finance director, Pam Stock, was one of the three panelists that were interviewing the candidates. We advertised in the local papers, Waikika Paper, and also we went down to Reading and advertised on the Reading Papers as well, as well as on our website, which went out to Twitter and Facebook. And we got two candidates, the one candidate who was selected is a candidate that is a local candidate, was working for a successful business for, for years as their finance person, until that business unfortunately closed its doors. But fortunately it gave us the opportunity to have somebody here who has an extensive background, bachelor's degree, he's actually in the process of taking a college course in financing, which includes governmental financing, financing with UC Davis right now is an extension course towards a certificate that he's achieving. So he's, he's got an excellent background and a long history of working in finances, and was actually a teacher for two years as well over in Texas. Him and his wife live here locally in Dunsborough, and the panel thought he was a perfect fit for the city of Dunsborough. So very fortunate that we have somebody that's well qualified and is gonna be a good fit and knows what to expect here in the city of Dunsborough.
Name's Charlie?
Uh, no, um...
It's not Charlie.
It's not Charlie.
What's his name?
You said Charlie, now I'm having a...
Blake Michaelson.
I thought I started seeing Charlie Brown.
Oh, I know. Blake Michaelson, okay.
Blake, and I work with his wife, Stacy.
And he's back to question.
I work with Blake's wife, Stacy, and they're both wonderful, wonderful citizens of Dunsborough, and Stacy, Blake is the son-in-law, and Stacy is the daughter of Carol Scalpo and Tony Scalpo, so.
Oh, yeah, I know him.
So Blake's, Blake's son-in-law.
Yeah, he's a good dude.
Yeah, I worked with Blake at that set of businesses, great guy.
Yeah, great guy.
Done a lot of great things. The only guy are those types of people who work at the city.
That's right.
I was told, I was told that after the interview, the person from Mount Shasta walked over to our city manager and he says, "Hi, Mr. Knight," so there would be, maybe that's a rumor, maybe it's not, but in any case, it sounds good. While we're at it, I heard there was rumblings about something going on in, what's it called, the planning commission? We have a new planning commission director, chairman?
Oh, we have a new chair, yeah, the, Ken Conway is the new chair for the planning commission, and I think Don Harley is the vice chair.
No, Craig Kay is the chair.
Oh, Craig Kay, that's right.
Don Harley is the, along with, is the head, my representative.
That's right, yeah, thank you. Yeah, and, and so Craig Kay gets sworn in on the seat and then gets put into the vice chair of the planning commission.
Well, I'd like to take the opportunity with that news, and we already said, thank you to Mrs. Cross for her service, and same time, I think I'd like to thank Ken Conway for stepping up, and I think everyone that I've talked to is pretty excited about what she can bring to the position, so we're gonna do that sort of thing.
We have a running tradition of hitting the ground running with our officials.
Yeah.
When I, when I was elected, and that was in 2014, I was a part of this vice chair at the age of 23. That's okay, just remember.
Jess shows you how desperate we are, right?
I'm ready, but...
Ready, yeah, we'll keep ready, all right.
Okay, moving onward, consent agenda.
Make the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove, yeah, obviously. No public hearing, old business. HDMA, HDMC, let me, before I turn it over to the city manager, I've always done a lot of research on this, and I'm looking forward to being chair. The reason that I asked for this to be put on the agenda last time is because this is an issue that has been percolating, and it's been going on for some time, there's a lot of confusion, there's different viewpoints as to what this is and what it should be, and so I thought that this would be an opportunity for us to just lay out and make everyone aware that there is this confusion, and then decide from there what the best course would be, whether that involves the city itself getting involved or not, as far as the city council, that's up for, for discussion. But I just thought that turns over to the city manager for his analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So as the mayor noted, I was asked to add this item to the agenda, it was something that was brought up in public comment, so I have to give a lot of credit to Julie, Julie really did all of the work here. I did the copy and paste expertly, but I did a good copy and paste of what Julie provided, with a few, few narratives, but Julie did all the digging into the historical minutes of what actually is recorded in regards to this issue. So what we have here, there may be lots of other things that were ancillary, but this is what was recorded. And back in 2004, there was, the city had retained a consultant to evaluate the HDMC and to provide a report to the council. There's sections of his report that's put in here in italics that showed that there was a cost to this formation, and recommended that this, his recommendation was to create a seven-member planning commission, including two HDM members. This recommend, showing that what's been done in the past, and showing that there's, that these costs were most likely not appropriate for the city to, to take. And then 10 years later, from 2004 to 2014, there was another concerted effort to bring back the HDMC again. And in February 6th, 2014, there was a combined meeting with the city council and the planning commission, and there was a report from Ron Cloud regarding the formation of a historic management district. There was a motion and a second to accept the layers of interest. And there was a motion and a second to accept the letters of interest to be submitted by March 14th, 2004, so that's some action that was taken. In March 6th, 2014, the council, at the council meeting, discussion among council members were about whether HDMC would be a separate entity or a committee of the planning commission. And it stated that if it will be a separate, the city code would have to be changed. Council member agrees to appoint HDMC members. At the next council meeting, those members would create ideas, guidelines, and ordinance. So in May 2014, at the council meeting, council received six letters of interest and appointed all six members to the HDMC, including, they list the members here in the notes here. But wanted to note that there was some talk about a resolution being passed. The resolution number that was, we found, that was in the packet was 2014-13, was not signed, you did not see anywhere where it was signed in resolution form or in the minutes. And it was, the resolution was for four members and there was six members appointed. In June 5th, 2014, the city council met, had a sudden meeting with the HDMC as part of the June 19th, the city council meeting, and then in the June 19th meeting, let's see, Helen Cartwright, one of the members, asked about the HDMC meeting and council member Kelby stated the ordinance would have to be changed. The joint meeting with the public facilities and services committee would be scheduled to create a plan to get the HDMC going. June 17th of that year, the city manager Baines reported that the public facilities committee mess with the HDMC to discuss how the group would take shape. The consensus was the historic district was in good shape, except for the vacant buildings. The group is going to look at cleaning buildings and envision how to get businesses into the vacant buildings. Then in August, city manager Baines reported that the HDMC has been tasked with creating a new ordinance out of two ordinances. Three people have resigned from the HDMC and not enough people remain. Those that resigned felt the group did not have a purpose and thought the historic district never looked better. And then September 4th, Art, one of the citizens, Art stated, the newspaper quoted city manager Baines saying the historic district never looked better. He has acted complaints with the planning commission and the city council and feels the council should make the policy and stick with it. City manager Baines stated the quote did not come from her. And then we have, four years later, we have the item again on the city council for consideration. And I would like to note that I did meet with Ron McLeod yesterday. I gave him the staff report of the findings that Julie was able to get from the minutes. Had a wonderful conversation with him about the HDMC and how it came about. And he was, he was here as one of kind of the founding people that saw that there was a need back in, when he first started his business where there was another business that was putting up a sign that was blocking other businesses' signs and it was just ugly and unsightly. They wanted the city to do something about it and from what he was saying, the city didn't have the, any kind of laws or authority to do anything about it. So that's when they created, the people of the businesses got together and created a group that went to help the city in establishing the historic downtown district. Plus they did a lot of other amazing things. One was a fountain that is over here, just at the corner. So they went out to bid to get architects to design this fountain. They had three, three bids come in. They didn't like any one, any of them, so they designed and built their own. That's what we have today. So it sounded like a very powerful and active group that they had. But I, what, what I was asking him was, what is it with this group that gives them any kind of powers or authorities? He said, "Well, they don't have the powers or authorities." So I was trying to understand, what is the government's role? Why would we want a group to be in place if they don't have any powers or authorities? They would have to go to the planning commission or to the city council to have any kind of action being done, preferably with, come to staff. And they have the authority. So the planning commission has authority on land use type of things with like signs, as we just met last, last week regarding a sign issue. And we're working through that. And then, and of course, the city council has authority on code, code enforcement, which both items the staff work through. So creating a special law, creating new laws and ordinance to allow a group to come into form that doesn't really have authority, I was struggling with what is it that we want them to do? Where they could do this now, and that was kind of a recommendation. I was saying, "Well, what if the business community gets together now and starts working together, maybe a Main Street society? Or they just get a group and they work together and communicate, maybe work with the chamber, make sure that they support the chamber for events and help to sponsor." We, Joe next door, you know, needs to do some work, let's talk to Joe next door. And, and they can always come to the planning commission and come to the city council if they feel they need assistance and one of the things that we have authorities over. So it was a wonderful conversation. I was hoping he was going to show tonight, but he did send out, he gave me something about the history of the historic downtown district. I did send that out to the city council.
Right.
Yeah, it was very well written, it's wonderful to read. He's a very talented writer. So that's, we have the factual background that we have from our minister, that Julie got. And I got some of the background that I just explained in my conversation with Ron McLeod and if there's any questions for council.
Questions for council, Mr. Craig?
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Burrow?
No questions.
Mr. Kaisner?
No questions, have fun.
I understand. Do you have a question for him? Okay, I'll have to pull me up to public comments. You know, public to comment, I close, I'll pull you up to public comments.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. It keeps, it keeps being brought before us that we've dropped the ball. When people that are on this committee resign and the committee goes to the win, it's not our fault. And I mean, we keep, we're, we're still being blamed for that. And so that acts, somebody needs to enlighten somebody else that people quit. We didn't drop the ball.
Mr. Craig?
Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
So, I, I think I somewhat share your frustration, but just curiosity as to what is the, what is the role of the city council or the planning commission with regard to this? And it seems to me that there's a lot of affinity or, you know, happy vibes around some nostalgia for, for this management committee because they had some successes in the past and that should be applauded, of course. But the things that, it, it seems that, the things that people want to see done are already under the purview of the planning commission with regard to signage, are already under the purview of the city council with regard to code enforcement. We already struggle with code enforcement issues anyway, with just having so little staff. So, we're going to continue to get complaints about code enforcement until we can fund a full-time code enforcement officer or until we can figure out some other code enforcement strategies that are likely to work. But I think I agree with the city manager in terms of, I'm not sure exactly what a historic district management committee would do differently than a group of concerned business owners or citizens might do. And the longer I spend, the longer I spend as a member of city government, the more I see opportunities for people outside of government to, to step up and be more active members of the community and maybe more effective. I'm just wondering if, if this could be a citizens group that is, that is not really affiliated with the city of Dunsmere. I, I just don't know what, you know, maybe it would give them some more authority.
It could only be a formal complaint.
Right, which, which, which they didn't do already. There's already a formal complaint process for code enforcement, for violations of the municipal code. Unless there's some, something in the historic district ordinance that, you know, really points to needing a management committee in order to oversee that, I, you know, I, I totally applaud the efforts of people bringing issues that they find, that they have that are important to the attention of the city council or the planning commission. But it seems like we've, we've just got this extra layer of management committee. And maybe there is some value to, to having that. I don't know that I, that I totally see it at this point. And it's created so much confusion.
This fire started when one dude wanted another dude to fix his building. And the other dude said, "No, I ain't gonna do it." It's all started. So, now the dude formed a committee so that he can make, us have people tell this dude to fix his stuff. That's how it started, in a nutshell. So, what it comes down to is, I own a business. If, 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 if my ordinances, if I'm compliant with the ordinances and, and my signage is, is, they, so what if it's dirty or it's the wrong color or what? It, it came with a couple of people not wanting to play ball. And that's where it started, so I feel better to put that out.
Sorry, I want to, one other thing. What is, what was it, like, a year ago or so now? There was a group of people who got together, I remember it was myself, Tim Hall, I know Mark Rowley and his wife were involved.
Two years ago.
Two years ago now?
Two years ago.
We went around and we, you know, we said it was going to be, happen every six months or so. It only happened once, because I only went on one of them. But we went around and we assessed all the facades. It was like the facade group, right? Was that, was that part of this?
No.
Or was that just?
That was a.
What was that?
That was something else, what was that? That was a.
Facade?
Yeah, I think it was a group that.
It was just a review, but I mean, that's essentially what, what I've worked with doing before, right?
Take notes.
Yeah, and make, make, make complaints, make recommendations to the city council.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, give me, because I want to.
It feels like this is already happening.
I know, it's, well, it's happening, but it's not, not even organized, but it's not happening.
To my mind, there's something that is pretty straightforward here. And that is that if the planning commission sees a need for this, it should be something that the planning commission works on and says, "We're going to assign the people and we're going to use these as people that will help us." But I don't see the city council as getting involved in staffing up a planning commission task force.
I mean, what is the job of the planning commission? It's land use, right? So it's, it's, it's more than, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit outside the purview to say that the planning commission is, should also have, at least the traditional definition, also have this, you know, burden of, you know, creating a subcommittee to deal with historic districts at, at large, you know, real large. I, I don't know, I'm, I'm confused by the need for it, frankly.
I was around and paying attention when all of this happened. It's made a staff report, or Julie had.
By the way, that was a good staff, that was a good job.
Yes, it was very good and it certainly is accurate because I remember all of it. And, you know, I'm not going to name names and I'm not going to cast an aspiration and I have to agree with Bryce and I agree with Dave. There's no need for it. And it all comes down to code enforcement. One faction trying to make other factions do what they want. That, what I'm in favor of is something that, when we were in Sacramento, our conference, and I know that Bryce sat in it, Mark did, and I did, is, you know, having an ordinance and working on it, I know Mark has talked to the other cities. We all have the same problem with code enforcement and we all have the same problem of not being able to fund it. As to maybe writing an ordinance, you know? All of our ordinances resemble the same thing on code enforcement and pooling our resources together to hire a really great code enforcement, you know, officer that rotates, you know, these, you know, cities. I don't see any need for this. I know that the group that was formed and quit, all of a sudden, it's because they had no, they thought they were going to have authority. And since they didn't get any authority, they all just quit. So, I don't, I agree with Bryce, I agree with, I just don't see any need for it. Until we resolve our long-term problem with code enforcement and being able to afford and really. My code enforcement officer, I don't, I don't see, just forming another committee and adding up staff. I think if the store owners, you know, have a particular need, I think that, you know, good citizenship and, you know, "Hey, I'm going to clean up my sidewalk, why don't you clean up your part of the sidewalk?"
So, direction given to not do anything with this at this time?
Just continue on to the next agenda.
Well, I would just ask.
Next, for next.
Does Mr. Jennings have any thoughts on this? I mean, are, is there a, is there a subcommittee of the chamber? Or is there, I mean, are the, the business owners that we talk about over and over here, are they members of the chamber of powers?
Right.
So they're participating in?
How about if we ask our lead? Because there's the brain right here, not your head.
Thanks, well, I appreciate that.
Well, I'd like to ask Richard.
Okay.
Well, I think the chamber basically is business oriented with the businesses here in Dunsmere. And we try to fortify all the businesses here by making them more united. I think there should be a committee, at least someone that takes a look at how the businesses are kept up. And I talked to a couple of people out of Jacksonville and they said that they got committees together.
You mean the buildings are kept up or the businesses?
Well, the, the buildings are kept up.
Okay.
Okay, because it's one of those things that people see. This is a beautiful town when you first go through it. I mean, you look at it and you go, "Wow, this is really a nice place to come." And what we need to do is we need to focus on making it more beautiful and keeping it beautiful. And one of the things I don't think we have is we don't have regularity on people getting together and saying, "What kind of grants can we get?" And I know there's painting grants out there with all kinds of paint manufacturers that help people get these buildings painted. And I think that we could go and do something like that with our businesses. But I'm not sure about every business. And no, not every business here in town is a member.
So why is this not something that the chamber takes up?
Well, we don't want to be in code enforcement, that's for sure. I mean.
You want what?
We don't want to be in code enforcement because
Of course.
we, we don't want to say, "Well, your sign's not what, what it's supposed to be." What we want to do is we want to promote the businesses themselves.
Right, but wouldn't the businesses do better if they police and promote themselves?
I want to say the chamber acts as an advocate for business.
We do now.
Yes, and they do.
Yes.
I mean, I, I agree with that. But why, why would it be this, why would it be the city's job to tell businesses?
Because we govern.
Well, I don't really necessarily agree with you.
Well, there, there was a time when Dunsmere was not business friendly. I can tell you that. And a lot of businesses came to us and said, "How come the town isn't business friendly?" And I didn't know one, I didn't know one. They weren't getting the help and they weren't getting the assistance that some of the earlier management, when they were there, they didn't give them anything. And I don't know whether that was due to cost of permits or assistance in just getting a business started. And we had a lot of changeover with the chamber also. So there was a lot of city change, changeover, a lot of chambers changeover. And I think now we're working better together. We're trying to get these businesses united so we can help them. We're putting on a mixer coming up on the 21st next week, on Wednesday. We have Logan Smith coming down and we have Sean Smith. And we have Jedi also there to help these businesses kind of, kind of reinvent themselves, see what kind of funding's available. So we're out there trying to get these businesses healthy again. But I think what, the one thing that we really need to do is get the, some of these buildings back in shape, so.
I think, Richard, if it's okay.
Sure.
I think what, one avenue for progressing forward here would be for, I, I just feel like this is seen as like, a couple of businesses or building owners saying that the city's not doing anything about code enforcement. a couple of business or building owners saying that the city's not doing anything about code enforcement or historic district preservation. We hear this over and over. I think what we could use is more, if the business community, I mean, through the chamber was at, was, you know, speaking with a single voice and messaging toward what they'd like to see done differently. Then I think that would help. Basically, if we're hearing from the business community as a whole. And we want to know what the business members that you are interfacing with are saying about these issues, right? And I think that would help. I don't know if that's really anything that's different than what is going on now, but we have to change the way that this is seen, I mean. Because that's a big part of it. Do you think that makes any sense?
No, it does make sense. No, it does make sense. It really does. And one of the things that we don't have a lot of is we don't have camaraderie that comes. In other words, they don't even come to the meetings. They don't take the time to come to the meetings. I have five board members. And basically, we kind of set the stage of how we want to work. When we have our mixers, we try to get the people more involved. We try to get the businesses more involved. And I just think sometimes we just run into a dead end. And it just, we're so seasonal here. And we kind of rely on a lot of tourism. And I think one of the things that when the tourism falls, that momentum falls. I think that's one of the biggest problems we have here in Dunsmere. But I agree with you in working with the businesses and trying to get a voice out so we can get it to city council. I think that's something we'll work on.
Thanks, sir. Unless there's a objection I'd like to move on and throw back.
The one other small comment too is, is that if someone comes to us with a problem, like say they want to paint the building, and say, "Hey, we have money to do this. We just want your blessing to do it." If you come to us with a problem and a solution, that's easier to act on. Come to us with a problem and say you need to fix that, that's much more difficult because, I mean, we're looking by time. We're looking by resources, by staff, and by money. If you could address those four things and tell us how to do it, we can do it.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item of the business, Dunsmere Park and Recreation District Equipment.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just first apologize for not finishing my staff report. I was looking to get back to the background and too many fires popped up. But we do have a vacancy in the Parks and Rec District. I did talk with Mike Rodriguez today about this as well. And we have a candidate that did submit a letter of interest through email. That's in the package as well. The person's name is Kate O'Grady. She did ask that we notice a mistake that was in there and just clarify that she actually started in 2010 with the school. That's exactly what it was.
Dunsmere Elementary.
Yeah. So Mike Rodriguez, even though she's not here today, she had a pre-planned trip. She's in San Diego right now. And she did ask that if the council wants her to be here to, she could make the next meeting. And if that's the case, we do have her letter of interest here. And she, Mike Rodriguez, believes that she's a good candidate and encourages the council to move forward with the appointment if you so desire.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know Katie and I fully support her, but I don't want to, you know, start this policy that when we're filling a board or the applicant isn't here. I understand that she was already planning her, it's, you know, not going to be a huge thing whether she's there or not. I'd like to postpone this until she can come in personally, you know, meet us and...
Well...
Give you a blessing, so...
Mr. Mayor? Before I do anything else, is there any public that would like to comment? If not, close the podium, which hasn't been open.
Yeah. I happen to know that, I know this lady. She's a very good friend of mine. She's a girl cheering with me. She's, she's got, the only reason why she's got here is because she's taking care of them all. And I don't, I think we all know her. So I don't think her having to be here, her reputation speaks for herself as far as I'm concerned. I'm all about appointing her right now. She fits the bill with Mike's love to the death. She'd be the perfect, perfect person for our board, so that's my thought.
Bryce?
I totally agree with Madi's sentiment that in a, that we should try to, we have an obligation to ourselves to, to do as much due diligence as we can to meet the people who we appoint to these boards. In this circumstance, I'm totally fine with supporting her appointment to the board. But in general, you know, if it can be avoided, of course, we'd like to meet the candidates. But in this case, she comes so highly recommended, so many of us know her. And I think that I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Spurlock, any comments?
Comfortable with it too. I know that, I had a few interactions with her, I know her at the levels. Others do, but I feel comfortable.
Black box on the hour that I know her very well as well. And I also spoke with Mr. Rodriguez earlier today and he asked me specifically, "When he's here, can you bring her?" So with that in mind and recognizing the valid and certainly valid reasoning behind the chant, do I hear anything else coming from somebody here?
I move that we appoint Kate O'Grady to the district board.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, and abstating?
Just...
I understand. Okay, next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, just read out the vote count, please.
So it would be four to one, all abstaining?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not... We do this more than, more than once, so we are a small community. People can be present if they can't and we can make accommodations.
I understand, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, we'll move on to, we have to do... So that takes care of the resolution. Great, okay, great. Okay, next we have Dunsmere Community Vision Statement. I would like to point out something for the folks here. I do believe we need to change the function here on the second sentence. But then, before I do that, Mr. City Manager, would you introduce this and those two?
Sure. Yeah, the council has authorized a committee to do a vision, mission work group. The work group met twice, once in December and once in January. And at the January meeting, the work group came up with the vision statement that's before you today for consideration of adoption for the city of Dunsmere's vision statement. The vision statement that was, that came about is, "In Dunsmere, we commit to building on our heritage while enhancing the quality of life for all. We collaborate to foster pride, develop a vibrant, diverse economy, preserve our mountain environment, and celebrate our active and creative community." And these action-type verbs that were selected were, you know, brought about from quite a group of what the city should be, looking into the future. And a lot of these really look at, what is it that this community wants to be and who are we? And one being a community that needs to come together to work together to create vibrant, meaning growth, but the kind of growth that is full of energy and supports this type of, this community. Economy is important, but it's economy that is going to be supported by the way of life here as well. Which comes down to the locals coming together, which is the foster of pride. And that's where the community civicness comes together to say, "We want to be prideful and do the things we want to do, that we need." Like the children picking up trash. We have people working on getting the fountain going again and painting murals. That's that kind of stuff. And preserve the mountain environment. We're in the mountain and everyone's very proud of the mountain that we live in, that's why we're here. And celebrate our active and creative community. Again, the active and creative, that's coming together and being creative. That's the wonderful artists that we have, the wonderful musicians that we have. And just the creative ideas that come out of this small town. So this was what, out of all the hundreds of ideas that came out from the first session, was brought down to about 50. And then it was brought down to what we have here for today.
Thank you. I would point out that since we have a comma after vibrant and before diverse, that means that we're gonna have to take each of those different clauses and give them a semi-colon.
I recommend a change.
Okay, Neil, just follow up on this and then we can change it.
I think it would address your...
Okay, go ahead, sure.
I would just remove the comma after the word vibrant and add the word "and", so that we have developed a vibrant and diverse economy. But I would also recommend adding an Oxford comma after the word environment, because I'm a fan of the Oxford comma.
What the hell's an Oxford comma?
It's just like comma at the end of a comma-separated list that adds clarity to the statement. I think you should be a fan of the Oxford comma too.
I'm a fan of the...
I'm not a fan of the Oxford comma.
Where do you want this Oxford comma?
At the end of the word environment.
I know what you mean.
Environment.
Let's see, that's hard.
Environment.
Oxford comma. No, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. So we can remove a comma, we can add a comma in a different spot, and then we just need the word "and" after vibrant. And it all makes sense to me then.
I hate to actually do this, but I guess we're gonna have to. So do you want to try to take a poll here of who wants to have a comma, Oxford comma, or not?
I mean, if I had to split a hair, I'm not gonna bother on your part. I'm in favor of Mary Craig's side.
So what is, how does it read, Bryce?
All you say is that instead of adding the "and" there and celebrating...
I'm not talking about commas. I want, you are adding a word?
"And."
Yeah, so the sentence would be, "We collaborate to foster pride, comma, develop a vibrant and diverse economy, comma, preserve our mountain environment, comma, and celebrate our active and creative community."
That is comma right there, there's a comma. It's the same comma now.
Oh, the comma.
Well, I like, I like reading adding the "and." I'm not a fan of Oxford commas, but it's not always my favorite. You guys can battle it out.
Okay. But let's leave it at that. Do you want to have a motion on this, so we can adopt it?
Who's your public comment?
Oh, there we have it. Do we have public comment? Any public comment?
Any comment on the comma?
Close it.
Come on, supportive of an Oxford comma.
I write the newspaper.
There you go, thank you.
Yeah.
That's for opinions. Okay, a closed podium that wasn't opened and...
I move that we adopt the vision statement, and I'll read it. "In Dunsmere, we commit to building on our heritage while enhancing the quality of life for all. We collaborate to foster pride, develop a vibrant and diverse economy, preserve our mountain environment, and celebrate our active and creative community."
Oh, so he has to go, "Ah, ah, and," there's no breath there. That's not a constant. Okay, you better find a length of all of the Oxford comma to our verses. I'll second that, second, okay?
Do an Oxford comma?
Yeah, I feel the environment.
Okay, I didn't hear you say that, okay.
I didn't say the commas when I read it.
Yeah, mountain environment, Oxford comma, and so on. And then, three, second, so I have a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? The agenda is...
I'm gonna make the first of that.
I first.
I seconded. I seconded.
That's David. Next on the agenda, authority of city manager to sign master agreement number 02-5183-F15 and program supplements to state agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I have two resolutions that are gonna be coming up here. The master agreement, let's see, is the first of the resolution that's in support of work that we're looking to do with Caltrans. This, currently, the city of Dunsmere has a master agreement that was accepted or adopted by council back in April of 2010. And that's probably when they were looking at doing the Butterfly Bridge back then. Since then, we've closed that application out and opened a new application, received the funding for the new application. But they have, since 2010, have new terms with the master agreement. And they are asking that the city adopt the master agreement to its new according standard, which is included in with the staff report. And with that, there's, I'm looking to, I've actually already signed that agreement. And that's when I learned that I need a resolution that comes from the city council that authorizes myself to be able to sign the documents that come from Caltrans. Or else everything has to come to the city council for adopting. So there's two things here. One is to authorize the master agreement. The second one is to authorize me to sign the master agreement and to sign other type of Caltrans paperwork that will be coming to the city in support of the Butterfly Bridge. And possibly feature things that may come about as well.
This particular right?
Are there two other resolutions?
There's only one resolution. The next agenda item will have another resolution. That deals with Caltrans as well.
What next agenda?
The next agenda item.
Seventeen D.
Yeah, there's one on policies, of course.
Mark, I'm sorry, I did not read this whole thing. I pressed the...
Yeah. Sixty-nine pages.
Any questions before we open the podium? No questions, open the podium for the comment, close the podium for the comment. My motion that we have approved or authorized the city manager to sign documents for Caltrans.
We have motion to be to adopt a resolution, correct?
Yes, so there's a, there's a...
There's an actual motion here for, you want to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass a resolution 2018-2, authorizing the city manager to execute program supplements.
That's why I want to read.
Reading from the resolution.
I'll second that.
Can you read that again?
We're not done yet.
No, we're, I have somewhere to read.
What's the, did you read the resolution number?
No, here's the resolution, you didn't read the resolution.
I'm reading the resolution right now.
Okay, can you re-read your motion, please?
On page one of the staff report for this item, it says, "The options are authorize or not to authorize." And the suggestion motion is to move to pass resolution.
Move to pass resolution 2018-2, authorizing the city manager to sign the master agreement number 02-5183-F, as in front, 15, and all program supplements to administrative agency state agreements.
I will second that.
First and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor of the resolution. Technically, we have two motions on the table there.
I will... I'll drop mine.
Good.
Now, this is the other part. Yeah, just second, I'm just getting into it right now.
Second resolution.
It's ready! I can't find it. I don't have the second one. I only have the one.
I have the staff report for the second one, but can you introduce the item? Are you on the item?
Yeah. I don't have it.
You just need to introduce the item.
City council, being a, okay, citizens, city council, we ask to pass a resolution adopting the state of California Department of Transportation, Caltrans consultant procurement manual dated April 2017.
I'm sorry, point of order is, so we moved on from item seventeen C. Seventeen C, we're gonna begin item seventeen T, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to...
Needs to introduce.
That report, sir.
Okay, thank you. The next, last item on the agenda has to do with another Caltrans issue. Back in September 20th, 2016, Caltrans issued the city of Dunsmere a cure cost audit with some findings. One of these findings was that the city needed to have some policies and procedures in place dealing with architectural and engineering contracts and how the city should go about doing the procurement for such contracts. The city has essentially three options that I'm aware of. One is that the city can write its own policy. And some cities, in fact, do have their own policies. Those policies, if the city should choose to write it, would have to go through Caltrans and Caltrans would have to approve those policies. And a lot of times there's back and forth where they need to see things changed so that they're both in concurrence. Those policies are very nineteen and expensive and complicated to write. So I would recommend against doing that. Another option is that the city can modify the Caltrans policy that we have before you today. Again, it's going into their policy, making changes. If there's anything in that we feel... we feel is not fit. And the third policy, or the third option, is that we can adopt the Caltrans policy as a whole. The benefit of adopting the Caltrans policy as it sits is, if there's any issues that arise out of our, the way we do our selection and processing for getting a contract with an A&amp;E consultant, that Caltrans would stand behind us on that, since it's their policy. When, I'm looking at going, beginning the process to develop a RFP for the Butterfly Bridge, probably in April of this year is my goal. And I, if adopted by the, if the council adopts it by resolution, that'll be a policy that I'll be using to make sure that I comply with the Caltrans, to make sure that we do it correctly. Essentially, we need to make sure that we are fair in how we go about selecting the engineering firm to do the work, and that all of the, like, dispatch businesses and stuff like that are included. So, there's a lot of procedural stuff that we have to do to make sure that we capture all the things that federal and state money requires to be done. And I'm also scheduled to be going to a class, that's the first part of April, that's a five-day class. Again, it's part of the curated audit that the Caltrans did, where they have to have staff that is training appropriately to do this type of stuff. So, I'm already signed up for the class. If this policy is adopted, this is what we'll be looking at using to make sure that we go out to bid correctly and get the right kind of bids, and I'm protected.
Cool, thank you, questions?
Yes, what is your, what's your notion?
The third option is to approve, is to just go with the Caltrans policy that is part of the package today.
So, option three?
Yeah.
Open podium, public comment, closed podium, public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move we adopt Resolution 2018-03, which would adopt the Caltrans policy for A&amp;E consultant contract selection and procurement as our own.
I'll second that. First and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, all closed. That's our last item. Any items and discussions, or things for the next meeting? I think I have one piece of information I would just like to pour down, just so you're aware of it, because it's gonna be something happening in the near future. I've received word from Mr. Juarez that the group from China that is planning on coming over to bring a hundred students to Dunsmere High School and a hundred students to CLS apparently is in the works. The company and the folks from China that visited us in the past have decided that we're going to be one of the sites that they're going to be using. Apparently, with that designation will come funds from the program to help prepare for them to be here, because there are a lot of obvious questions that both the principal of high school, Ray Keller, and the city will have to be looking at. And I just wanted to let you know that something is happening on that front, and there is a possibility, a probability perhaps, that come the end of the summer, we may have a hundred new students showing up and down, if things work out the way they've been talking. Nothing else? Meeting is adjourned, and thank you all.